All to order, notices hereby given in accordance to General Law thirty-nine. Section twenty-three A, the special meeting of the Lawrence redevelopment authority will be held on Wednesday, July second, twenty twenty-five at five P M. The meeting will be held at two fifty-five Estes Street, first floor. Lawrence Mass oh one eight four zero pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law thirty, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public meeting of the L R A is also being conducted via remote participation. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they were to do so. When a portion of the hearing designated for public comment by use of the following. Uh, roll call.
Anna Medina, present. Pedro, present.
Present.
Eric Walker.
Present. New business. First, we have the Downtown Association overview of the downtown Lawrence block party proposal. We have a report. Do we all see that? Those total budget will be a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fifteen five hundred dollars. Re-events estimated at thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars each. Uh, we have dates July twenty-sixth, August thirtieth, and September twenty-seventh of this year. You have any questions?
Who's gonna give us the update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, uh, last week I, I raised just some concerns that, you know, we didn't have much in terms of, uh, paperwork on, on the proposal, uh, so it's, it's great that they've broken it down for the board. Uh, I was able to have a conference call with the Inspector General's office, one of the attorneys in the office, and Octavian earlier this week gave him the fact pattern. And, uh, they were, uh, very happy to report that, uh, they, they gave us a, uh, provision of chapter thirty B that exempts, um, grant agreements with, uh, nonprofits that are, that are, uh, intending to put on some sort of a, uh, public event like this.
Okay.
I'm going to, uh, just pull up the, uh, the reference. Yeah, so basically what, uh, if, if, if the board is amenable to supporting this, uh, this event, uh, we could do it, uh, we could fund it via a grant agreement, which, uh, is defined in section two of chapter thirty B as, uh, an agreement or contract between a governmental body, which the L R A would sit under, and an individual or nonprofit entity, the purpose of which is to carry out a public purpose or support a stimulate or stimulation, support a stimulation instead of procuring supplies or services for the benefit or use of the government body. So basically, uh, something like this where a, a nonprofit entity is, uh, proposing to undertake a project that's going to benefit the city, something that the L R A would ordinarily do itself pursuant to its own mission, uh, the L R A can support that via a grant agreement. I've done some research. I have, uh, basically a draft grant agreement ready to go. Now that I've seen this, um, proposal here, I can, I can tailor the grant agreement, um, to, uh, fit this proposal. And basically, um, whatever amount that the L R A would, would agree to, uh, the grant, um, would go, uh, to the, uh, the nonprofit entity, uh, proposing to, to run this festival, a series of festivals. And there would be some conditions, obviously, they'd have to, uh, use the money for, um, the, uh, the items that they've specified in their proposal, and at the end of the process, provide the L R A with the, uh, accounting and any money that may not have been used. Um, because what we have basically are estimates for things like tent rentals and stage and marketing and permits and so on and so forth. Um, and then, uh, any, any money that was not expended, uh, for this purpose would be, have to be returned to the L R A, so. Uh, if the board is amenable, I can move forward with a grant agreement and work with these folks. They've already reached out to me and asked if I could help with some of the, uh, legal work. Uh, dealing with contracts and retaining the various, uh, service providers. So I, I ran that by Octavian. He said that's absolutely what he has in mind, so I would do that. I've worked with these guys, sort of make sure everything was on the up and up. Uh, make sure they had the proper permits, the proper insurance, uh, all the things that they would need to put on a festival. Otherwise, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not in the business of running festivals. I don't know where to begin on these types of things, but I take it that these guys know what they're doing and, uh, so it's, it's, it's the board's call on, uh, when you see fit to grant the money, and if you do, uh, you can authorize me to move forward and get a grant agreement going with these guys.
Uh, thank you for doing all the legwork to make sure that, one, we can do it, um, legally, I guess. And also to, uh, have eyes on the process to make sure, uh, the money that we invest is properly used, which I'm sure will be. Um, Ford, do we have any questions?
Well, provided that they, uh, giving us details.
Before or after the grant is made? Before, uh, would you want more detail before? Okay, yeah.
They're not saying that they will, they give us the details.
I would expect that they would provide an accounting at the end of the process and, uh, let us know exactly how the money was spent, seats and so on and so forth, and then the L R A could assess at that point, um, you know, whether this was legitimate, whether it's something to be done in the future, or, uh, you know, whether this is a one-time thing, but, uh, yeah, absolutely. The, the agreement will specify that they're gonna have to be in accounting.
And for now, the agreement will go here to here because this is the first time that they can decide.
Absolutely. The agreement is just gonna be for this one, one summer series. And then you, you guys can revisit, uh, whether it was successful and something you want to fund in the future. I think you're talking to Octavian, his thought was that the L R A would kind of, try to jumpstart it. But that going forward, what the Downtown Association really should be doing, seeking contributions from local businesses and other people, so that it's sort of self-funded. And then the L R A could sort of chip in, you know, as needed, but not basically funded, uh, as much as being funded in twenty twenty-five. I will also point out that this organization received a grant from the city. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, of like three hundred thousand to do things, including events like this. So they have a, a budget. Uh, the Downtown Association has a budget for these types of events. They're asking the L R A to, uh, contribute because they don't want to basically blow their entire budget on, on, on one thing, so.
So they, they have their, their hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred dollars on hand from a previous grant from the city?
They're, they're gonna put in, uh, Downtown Lawrence Association is proposing to put in half.
Right.
And then the L R A matches.
Got it.
That, and then together, uh, um, uh, you've got enough money to put on a festival.
Pedro, anything?
Uh, just briefly, Brian, I know that, so just so that I can understand it through the chair, um, the, the grant will be conditioned, uh, so that it meets certain requirements.
You can propose, you can propose any requirements that you see fit. Uh, Pedro, I mean, basically, uh, I'm just, I'm just reviewing this tonight, so.
Right, we just got today. So so that, you know, because the numbers, what I want to be clear. We're, we're, we're proposing to run half of the total project.
Correct.
And the total project, as I, as, as seen, would be fifty-seven, seven fifty, plus the additional forty-seven five hundred.
No.
I, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, so this, this other contract, um, that was on last week's agenda is for consulting services, Town Enterprise Consulting, uh, which is proposing to basically oversee and manage the project, uh, which would be three series, a, a series of three events, forty-seven thousand five hundred.
So that, uh, so that forty-seven five is built into the, into that?
It's not built into the fifty-seven five.
It's not built into the one fifteen five? Okay, so it is independent, so it will?
Be in addition.
In addition to.
But it's nothing the same.
So, so basically, um, as I see it, uh, this contract for consulting services is not exempt from chapter thirty-three. The grant to the nonprofit entity is exempt, as I mentioned to you, I talked to Inspector General, and they provided us with, uh, this, the site for exemption, the grant agreement. Uh, to hire a consultant, I mean, basically, we've got to follow chapter thirty-three. We were gonna hire this person directly. So I think what the plan is, is to just simply provide the grant to Downtown Lawrence Association and let them hire the consultant.
Understood. So what's our bottom line number, Brian?
Well, the bottom line is fifty-seven, seven fifty, plus basically half to cover the consultant.
We're looking at about eighty-one five.
That sounds about right. I should assume random numbers already.
Yes.
What are your thoughts on that?
I would, I would like Octavian to be here, personally, as well, just that way.
Okay.
Um, you could have a clearer understanding.
Like both parts or the consulting part?
Just, just the overall scope and depth of the project.
Good.
Unless you guys see otherwise.
Anna. I we didn't.
Sorry.
We didn't.
Is there any way that we could table the, the vote until Octavian gets here?
Absolutely, absolutely. Does he plan to come tonight?
All right. All right, so we will revisit this when he gets here. Uh, number two.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or we're just gonna table?
Uh, yeah.
Table.
Need a motion to table this? Uh, second.
My second.
Roll call.
Anna Medina?
Yes, me.
Pedro, say it.
Yes.
Eric Walker?
Yes, so we will revisit this later in the meeting. Um, number two was, did we just do that? Review of the grant agreement with Downtown Lawrence Association to fund the festivals?
Yeah, that goes, that goes with the grant agreement.
Correct. Um, we'll group those together when, when Octavian gets here, one and two. All right, uh, number three. G-Town, Urban, about that block, oh no, wait a minute. One, two, and three, then.
And so those are all together.
Those are all together. My, my apologies. On to number four, status agreement update on L R A consultants. John Karis, James Karis, gosh. Can I get a motion to take these out of order? And get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anna, Peter? Peter, say it.
Yes.
All right. Okay, number six, the executive director position and contracts. I have a copy of the contracts. Uh, some of those. Brian, is this something you wrote?
No.
Okay. Have you looked at this?
I have.
What are your thoughts on it?
Um, no major objections. I mean, there's, you know, it's, it's blank in, in terms of the salary.
Right.
That's something that's gonna have to be discussed. Benefits uh, seem reasonable, membership in the retirement plan, which the L R A is a member of. Uh, provision of, uh, of, uh, other benefits. I guess we can discuss, uh, things like providing life insurance. I mean, that's something that would have to be, you know, procured, have to go out and get some, some bids from insurance companies and so on and so forth. But, uh, generally speaking, uh, you know, it's up to the, we, we up to the board how it wishes to lock in its, uh, its consultants.
Um, Ford, did you get a chance to look over the contract at all?
I've looked at it. It's pretty much standard boilerplate. It does not include any salary. And I don't know if that's, we, whether to determine the body, if they were not, what gets paid.
What that number is?
Yeah.
I think we gotta, if Octavian has to be here.
Um, did we need to do anything with this until we're ready to use it or just to review it?
I mean, I would like Octavian to be here to give us some indication. Obviously, uh, when, um, Octavian was, uh, when this board voted to, uh, hire Octavian as its executive director, it was early on in Mayor Capena's, uh, term, um, it was understood that there was, you know, the salary was being paid by the city, and so there's no real financial obligation.
Right.
Now, I think we're being asked to take on a full-time executive director and assume all of the responsibility that goes with that. So I think Octavian should be here to kind of give the board an indication of what, what he has in mind and what he has in mind to pay, when he wants to start, you know, so on and so forth.
Right.
So, are we assuming that this?
Yes, this is for anyone. It doesn't necessarily have to be us.
I think that's the.
I, I mean, he, you know, he, he prepared it and he left that blank. I don't know if he has anybody else in mind, but I don't think so. I think he's planning, he wants to be the executive director for the foreseeable future through the, you know, C V R F process through development and so on and so forth. So, I mean, look, I, I don't, I don't want to be speaking for him. All I can tell you is that.
You don't see, you don't see any glaring anything?
No, no, I mean, it's, there are a lot of details in here that obviously have to be ironed out for a contract of this magnitude.
Okay.
Including pay, length of, length of the term. You know, there's some things in here like with, uh, severance pay and stuff like that that are gonna have to be discussed. I mean, it's, you're gonna have to have some negotiation on this.
Okay. Well, hopefully he gets here soon.
Yeah.
All right, we're on to number seven. This is.
James Carr.
Okay, oh, can we double back? That was number number four, okay. Awesome. Can, um, James, are you there?
I am, um, and, and thank you, uh, for giving me the opportunity to just give you some brief updates.
Okay.
Both on the, uh, the, uh, selection of the developers that we've been going through for the past, now close to a year. Um, as well as, uh, the update on the, uh, uh, major amendment of the urban renewal plan. Um, I had a couple of PowerPoints, but unfortunately, uh, we are having an outage on our Wi-Fi, um, an area outage, and so I am now on my phone, uh, using the hotspot, so I don't have enough uh, Wi-Fi bandwidth to be able to, to put up my, uh, PowerPoint. So I, I'll just give you a very brief, uh, overview as well. So the, uh, developers, what I put together was a checklist that sent it to each one of the eight developers, and the checklist was to, for them to provide us with certain information, and the goal would be, once we gathered the information, I would sit down with the, uh, uh, L R A attorney, and we would put together a developer's agreement um, with the, each, uh, of the eight, uh, properties. Um, all of the developers have submitted, uh, some, if not all, of the information. One of the key uh, uh, items that we asked for was an, an appraisal of the property.
James, can you hear me?
Thanks.
Yes.
Hi. Um, I'm sorry, I made you the host because, um, they would, you would not be able to share the PowerPoint presentation, so can you make me the host again? I apologize.
Yes, hold on one second, um.
Sorry, uh, we, we had you on a roll.
Hey, Marisol, I'm having trouble finding where I would do that. Uh, this is a little bit different from what I normally use. Uh, oh, wait a minute, the, the host tools.
Yeah, there should be, uh.
Marisol, do you know where I should be?
Okay.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh.
Oh, she, she said she's all set. I'm sorry, James, can you pick up where you were?
Well, okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so each one of the developers, we asked them, uh, about eight or nine items uh, on a checklist, uh, for them to provide us. Uh, I gave them a, not a hard done dine, but we said we'd like to have it by, uh, June sixteenth. And all of them have either sent in all of the information or most of the information. Uh, a couple of them have asked for more time in terms of the appraisal and getting that done. Um, and I noticed that one of the developers, I was very specific in, 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 in asking for an appraisal based on their proposed usage, not as is appraisal. And one of the appraisals came back for an appraisal on the value of the, uh, land and not on the proposed use. So I need to get them to get that adjusted, but, uh, there's plenty of work here to get done. Uh, I need to reach out to, uh, Brian, uh, and begin the process of, uh, putting a developer's agreement. Uh, I have done, I'm not an attorney, but I have worked on developer agreements in the past. I have some templates that I can share with, uh, with Brian, and I'm pretty sure he has his, uh, format as well. And then our goal is to come back to you as each project is ready uh, to present a developer agreement and for the L R A board to approve the, uh, agreement. Now, obviously, and this is not within, uh, my area, but, uh, ultimately, uh, you know, the L R A is gonna have to have, uh, uh, ownership, or the property's transferred from the city, and I know that's an ongoing issue. But no developer agreement is gonna be able to be, uh, ironed out until the L R A actually uh, has, uh, possession of, of those, those properties. But I, I am, uh, I can, just in summary, say that all of the developers have been very actively interested in, uh, their projects. Uh, they've been, uh, asking questions. I've met with all of them. Uh, they're very proactive, uh, and responsive. Um, I have, you know, the PowerPoint that I have is a summary of each of the projects as where we are right now. Um, and, uh, it, you know, if somehow all eight projects, uh, uh, happen, this is gonna transform downtown Lawrence. It's over a thousand units of residential, a thousand, uh, residential units. Um, you know, over three hundred million dollars worth of, uh, of, uh, of, of, of property improvements. Uh, thousands of square feet of commercial, uh, space, hotel space, uh, environmental improvements. So there are a number of, uh, uh, pluses, needless to say, from all of these projects. But I'll stop and take any questions on the, uh, R F P of the developers and where we are in that process.
Uh, first, I want to say thank you, James, as always, for this monumental, humongous, I don't know what's more than humongous, what's, what's, what's bigger than that task thus far. Uh, Ford, any questions?
Just wanted to make sure that I, I understood what, what James said. James, through the chair, how are you? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everything?
I'm doing great, thank you. It's summer, I can't complain.
Excellent. James, just, just a quick question, um, and I, I wanted to make sure I heard you right. Um, when you, when you asked the developers for their appraisal, they're appraising for the value moving forward with the development, not for the value now, correct?
Yes.
Understood.
And the reason why I'm asking that, that, to ultimately, one of the key issues is for us to determine how much is the property gonna sell for, uh, how much is the L R A going to sell the property? Uh, you know, many of the developers are hoping that they, the property is transferred at no cost, as a subsidy, uh, as an incentive for their development. Uh, I've asked for an updated pro forma, and that updated pro forma will have a, here's the price that we want to pay for the land. And so that is gonna be a key point of negotiation is, how much does this land gets, it gets sold for? So I think ultimately, to be able to come up with that determination, we want to make sure we understand what the property value will be in the future. Um, and, uh, and, and use that as a basis for negotiation. Um, and, and I think that's gonna be a, quite a process, quite frankly, uh, for each, since we not, we don't have one property, we have eight properties to negotiate that, that land price.
Understood.
You know, uh, it, from a, from a financial point of view, you're, if you think of yourself as the individual owner, you want to get as much as you can. But you have a fiduciary responsibility as a public body that you want to see, the goal is the redevelopment, and in order to foster redevelopment, often land has to be discounted, uh, to provide that type of financial incentive that the, the developer may need. You know, coming up with that right number is a challenge, and, uh, and, uh, I, along with, uh, the executive director and the attorney will be, uh, advising you and, uh, making recommendations to you on that, that pricing.
Uh, thank you, James, and one last question, and it just came up from hearing what you just presented. Would purchase be the only option that you're looking at or that we're entertaining is leasing an option um, as well, or is that a consideration that's not being taken into?
Absolutely, absolutely. A long-term lease, uh, you know, uh, long-term, anything, uh, I consider would be over fifty years, typically at the ninety-nine year lease. Uh, it is definitely is an option.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Anna, anything?
Yeah, I just didn't think we were gonna speak to these.
Okay. Well, James, I'm I'm sad that the uh internet is uh an unreliable resource. Cause I would have liked to have seen it, but I guess we'll we'll get to the PowerPoint at some point.
Yeah, I'll, I will update it uh, uh, Mr. Chair to uh for the next board meeting. Uh, as I get new information, then I will be ready to update, hopefully. You know, whether it's the August or September, no later than the September board meeting, my goal is to have. At least one of the developer agreements uh ready to go for you to review and to uh make. Vote on, again, this is all conditional upon the actual transfer of the properties from the city to the L R A.
Yep, well, at least we know what the proposed projects are and the potential. As you, as you just stated, the potential impacts for the city are monumental, so. You know, uh, I think that's all we had.
Yeah, that that's.
Sorry.
Yes, um, and just uh the other part that I'm working on is uh we have uh. Fully launched uh the uh major amendment to the urban renewal plan. Essentially, it'll be a comprehensive update of the urban renewal plan. Um, our work plan for the next six months will be, over the summer. I will be interviewing what I consider key stakeholders on a one-on-one basis. Uh, including uh you uh as board members, city councillors, city officials. Uh, heads of community organizations uh and 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 others. Uh, private sector individuals as well, uh, I'll be interviewing one-on-one. Second, uh, we will be uh posting on the L R A website and hopefully soon on the city website. A survey that will stay open for the next four to six months. Uh, asking residents and business owners and others. To respond in terms of what the needs are in the uh in the urban renewal area. What are some of the key issues, what are recommendations? Uh, and I'll share that survey with you in terms of what, you'll see it on the website. Um, and we we need to get it translated into Spanish as well. Uh, and um, and we'll have it posted in both English and and in Spanish. In in the fall, uh, probably in latter part of September, early October. Will hold a uh meeting uh with the citizens advisory committee. The same committee that met with the uh developers and provided you with recommendations. Will meet with them and have a workshop with the citizens advisory committee on the uh their. Uh, comments and recommendations uh for the updated urban renewal plan. And then finally, what we plan to do is to have. Um, a public workshops on the urban renewal plan. We're considering holding one in the evening and then one on a Saturday. It would be a uh charrette type of workshop, will be interactive. Where residents and business owners and others will walk around, the room will have the downtown. Divided into uh subsections uh and people will talk to uh my staff and folks that will be there. And share what their needs are, concerns are, and recommendations, so we'll be gathering their input. All of this, this process of interviews, uh, surveys. Citizens Advisory Committee, charrette sessions with the public is really, really critical. Uh, for the urban renewal process, uh, and we have to document and demonstrate that we had a very. Uh, uh, aggressive citizen participation process. And I believe what we have in our work plan will uh more than cover us in terms of that requirement. But more importantly, beyond the requirement, we need that input from you, from the public and from of the the public officials. Staff uh to say, hey, if we wanna update this plan, well, what is it that we wanna do? One of the criticisms of the plan from twenty seventeen that we refer often, it's not specific enough. Well, uh, our goal is to uh have, uh, you know, some very specific projects that we want to undertake. So we don't have to get into the situation of having to apply for minor amendments or major amendments. So identifying specific projects that you wanna work on over the next uh five to seven years is is. Going to be uh one of our objectives. Um, so I have sent emails to each one of you uh to set up a time to interview. Uh, please respond and uh we're available. Pretty much the month of July and right into early August, um, and I'd like to sit down with each one of you uh virtually. Um, to uh ask you a number of questions and get your, get your input. Also, if you have uh some recommendations of folks that you think I should be interviewing. On a one-on-one basis, please send that to me, we already have a very uh robust list of potential interview. Interviewees, but if you have some that you think, here's somebody that you really need to talk to. Please let me know and send that to me by email as well.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Uh, that's five and six. Are we ready to go on to seventy? That's uh Brian's contract.
Yeah, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a a proposed contract, I I could talk to you and add it that in there.
Okay.
Wanted to discuss something, you can leave them to come up. I I don't have any proposed change to the terms of my representation of the board.
Okay, and have we, have we paid you?
I'm happy to just keep doing it.
Okay.
Until you decide you wanna go in a different direction.
That's, that's sounds good to me, I don't know.
Very happy with that.
Alright, well then we're on to them.
Different direction, Brian, what's that?
We're going in a different direction.
No, no.
No, not a, not as far as I know, we made that decision. Alright, number eight, we had some amendments to the bylaws.
I reviewed these, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Octavian uh prepared these, uh. I don't know where he got them, maybe from a different municipality. But in essence, they're almost identical to the current bylaws with the exception of uh provisions. Towards the end, which provides for indemnification of board members and uh. And uh, employees in the event that there's, you know, some sort of a lawsuit filed, so. I have no problem with uh. Your proposed amended bylaws. Um, again, I I think maybe this might be something that we want Octavian to uh. Be here for, but I I don't have any issues with it.
Maybe in that way.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything else we can? We can uh deal with before he gets here, or should we take a short recess to give him time to get here?
Yeah, we could, um, Mr. Chairman, if you did, the board likes to just discuss the unit hydro uh. Notice of activity and use limitation.
What number is that?
Number twelve.
Can I get a motion to take number twelve out of order, please?
Motion to take number twelve out of order.
A second, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call. Alright, alright, number twelve.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the uh. The L R A owns a unit hydro, which is a a unit in the uh Pacific Mills condominium. Uh, we're all aware of the the site and what it entails, uh. It's the former hydroelectric facility for the Pacific Mills complex. Contains all the old turbines, the hydroelectric equipment. Uh, all sorts of uh storage tanks and plumbing in the basement. Um, that site, I believe, like probably most. Of the mill sites around the city does have some contamination in the basement. Um, we do that going into the uh, the uh donation agreement with uh those folks. And um. This is a document that is uh sort of the culmination of all the research that's been done. And uh the decisions that are being made uh on how the property can and cannot be used, this agreement encompasses. Not only unit hydro, but other buildings in the Pacific Mills uh complex. And basically, for the L R A's purposes, what this does is it restricts. The use of the unit hydro warehouse facility that we've converted to a storage unit. To commercial or industrial use, so we're good to go with the storage. Or any other use that the L R A may decide to do down the road, as long as it's commercial industrial, cannot be used for residential purposes because of the. Contamination of the basement. Uh, the basement cannot be uh constructed, altered, or in any way disrupted such that it would. Uh, disturb the contamination. Disturb the soil.
Right.
And whatever other machinery is down there, basically. That basement area is just, for all intensive purposes, just has to be locked up and sort of. Um, figuratively encapsulated, you just can't use it.
But that's what we've done.
And that's fine, it's, there's no reason for the L R A to ever go down there, there's no, there are no utilities. Servicing the uh warehouse facility that uh are in the basement, that basement is. A complete dinosaur, just the ar- the archaic machinery that used to run. The uh, all the heating equipment and everything else for the mill complex, so. So this document basically is confirming all of this, uh, it has been executed by the other owners of the other units in the complex. And uh, the L R A is being asked to sign off just acknowledging its obligations and its restrictions. For use of this property going forward. Does not, does not impact us, does not create any financial obligations, does not uh impact use of the facility for storage. And um, it also does not impact the use down the road. For future generations to maybe try to reinstate the hydroelectric facility, but that's way down the road.
Got it.
And uh, that would have to be done carefully and in accordance with this document with all the site by the state. But it could be done at some point, I I I have my doubts on whether that facility will ever be economically viable for. Hydroelectric, but it's, it might just end up being a museum for the long term, you know.
So is it your recommendation that it can be signed off?
Absolutely.
Understood, so we can, we can file it, file it.
Yeah, before we leave tonight, Chairman, I'll get your signature on it as a chairman, then I'll authorize it delivered to the uh.
Sounds good. Or we have a problem with me signing this? At all? No, no, okay, we'll move forward from that. Can I entertain a motion to authorize me to sign off on this?
This is a restriction on the use of the unit that the L R A owns, and and the other. Uh, and other portions of the complex that L R A, not all of them, the contamination is underneath.
We're we're all agreeing that not to use it and dig up any.
Correct.
Monsters in the dirt. Uh, can I get a motion to authorize me to go ahead and sign off on this? So, can I get a second? Roll call. Alright, motion carries, thank you, Brian. What else do we have here?
You need Octavian for the other item?
Item nine, I believe, we don't, you may not need Octavian.
We do, yeah.
We do? Can I entertain a motion to take a brief recess, please? A motion to take a brief recess? Can I get a second?
One second.
Roll call. Alright, alright, brief rest, recess. Uh, can I get a motion to reconvene a meeting? Can I get a second? Roll call. Ramon, you're there?
No.
Okay, good. Eric Walker. Alright, alright, we are back. We froze some items on the agenda. For. Our executive director to get back. Do you know where we left off?
Well, that's, I think it's item one, right?
Yes. Octavian and Mr. Chairman, we, we took uh items one, two, three in a. In a block, had some discussion, we reviewed the proposal from. The Downtown Association. Uh, I explained that you and I had a uh teleconference with the Inspector General's office.
Right.
And confirm that uh, that a grant agreement would fall under an exemption to chapter thirty B. So the board is free to uh provide a a grant to um this organization. Then talked about the uh, the contract to the consultant, which is a different story. And uh, but that we would, uh, we're being asked to basically. Fund an amount uh in the grant that would allow the Downtown Association to pay for consulting. So I think uh, Pedro ran the numbers, uh, the total ask is around eighty-one thousand five hundred. And um, I think the board members were just uh looking for some kind of catering on logistics and things like that, which. Would have been nice to have the folks here to talk about it, but.
I think they're on vacation, I think they, they, they took off.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, the, and uh board members, the. The uh, what we have decided was to, you know, to simplify the the issue and not after we spoke with I G's office. Confirming the, that we can do the uh agreement with um. With uh Downtown Association for us to let them handle the 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 logistics part, which would be item two.
Okay.
Alright, or item three.
Basically, all three.
Yeah, all three. All three.
It's all one, uh. It's basically gonna be all one, we're gonna just, the L R A will provide a grant, the Downtown Lawrence Association. Uh, based upon its proposal, uh, which we received tonight. Um, as Anna requested, we would have some conditions in that agreement where they would have to provide us with an accounting. Uh, any funds that would go unused would have to be returned to the L R A. And then I guess at the end of the process, we will review the accounting and. Uh, you know, take, take matters from there, but uh, and then also I did mention to the board. Octavian, that I'm gonna be assisting with these folks with. Contract review and dealing with their, you know, the vendors and making sure that all the insurance is in place, the permits are obtained. Uh, and everything else, so I mean, it's gonna be quite a bit of work, I think, uh, but. If you're asking me to do it, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yes, correct, I think it's it's best uh for our attorney to handle it. Uh, number one, they have a responsibility to provide a reporting back. To us, so we know exactly how the the funding will spend. And that will alleviate us from having the responsibility, so, yes, I think it's, it's. It's, I'm in agreement with the attorney.
Um, Ford, do we have any other questions about this? Um, the consulting piece. Uh, and putting stipulations in place such that, you know, we make this investment that, I'm sure the money will be spent. Probably, but just to make sure that it is done, so.
For the chair, so we are working directly with the Downtown Lawrence Association, that is who.
Yes, correct, correct.
And that's any one part of it, I understand, sorry about. And I think ultimately, uh, you know, uh, they're, they're gonna hire the consultant, so I'll be, I assume I'll be working with the consultant. From uh, from E-Town, uh, who's gonna kind of be running the day-to-day logistics and. Just making sure that everything is uh. You know, goes according to plan and that the L R A is protected, otherwise, I mean, it's, it's up to these guys, I I don't know how to run a, certainly don't know how to run a festival. So I'm not providing any of that expertise, certainly.
Yes, yeah, and Mr. Chair and uh board members, the, this is a pilot project, so this is not gonna be a a huge. Event, it could be, uh, but the idea was uh i- is. To have a trial through a pilot project, do three events, initially, we, we spoken about four. But then we said, you know, we. Initially, we, we spoken about four, but then we said, you know, we're gonna have San Alteo, which is also a festival in, in the downtown, and so we don't want to interfere with that. And it would be too much. And as I think what was explained during the previous meeting, this is to bring the stake, the, the community together as a family event. We are not providing any beverages or, or, let's say, I mean, the Downtown Association, just the alcohol beverages or food. It's basically to attract investment downtown. I, I mean, the patrons downtown to, to spend money in the restaurants and, uh, or food establishments.
The amenities that we already had.
Right. And there's a purpose also to that because we have, I think it's three projects in, in the downtown. One on Essex Street, one, two on Common Street and two on, uh, the Thule Street. So if, if investors are seeing that there's activities and, and this could be something huge, is it gonna also be an attraction north of Boston? We have a lot to offer, even though sometimes people say no, but we do. This is known as a, as a culinary destination. We can have our different artists that, that are in, in, that are from Lawrence and, and are living here. And we also have different organizations that are, are dance studios, let's call them. And that would be an attraction. So if, if, if you're a retail store or you're a company that wants to establish another food establishment and you see that there's activities and it's well organized, then it's, it, it encourages other companies to come to Lawrence. Obviously, uh, the, the police department is gonna cooperate, just to repeat. They're gonna provide four police officers since it's organized between the city, the LRA and the, and the Downtown Association, both fire department and police department are willing to, to, uh, help us out during this year. Next year, it's something different. The businesses need to, to be proactive, continue, you know, organizing these events. Uh, but at least they have a, a structure to follow.
Are we ready to take a, take a vote on whether or not we want to do this? I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
One second.
Well, I'm not gonna make it.
I will, I will entertain the motion.
You do? We have a second on this? All right, roll call.
Anna Medina. Pedro Dejada. Eric Walker.
All right. So we will fund this with Brian minding the store, if you will. And hopefully we'll continue working towards making Lawrence a destination that I discovered. Awesome. Beautiful. Yep. All right, we had.
Dr. Karris.
He came on and he gave us an update as best he could. His internet was out, so we didn't get a chance to see the PowerPoint.
It's online right now.
He gave his presentation.
He gave his presentation? Are we good? Okay, what on the item do we have?
We're on, we're on eight, nine, ten, eleven. Talked about your contract a little bit.
I mean, the contract for the position. Not my contract, I'm talking about the position. Okay, so.
We discussed the bylaws. Oh, but we, there's a section that we didn't discuss.
Yeah, we talked about the bylaws. I told the board that you had done some homework and, and made some amendments based on another municipality. Basically, it's almost the same bylaws that we have in place right now, except you've added indemnification provisions for the board members and staff.
Correct.
I didn't notice anything else that was.
Well, the different, the other one was the, uh, yes, there are, uh, it's a different, um, we adopted some of, some of the sections of the bylaws of Cambridge. And that was included within the, within the document. I mean, if you guys reviewed it, I think it's good. I think that's what.
I thought it was fine, yeah. All right.
I mean, if you guys reviewed it, that's good.
I don't, I mean, I know there's a section on insurance. I, I never asked, we currently couldn't have insurance.
Yes, the insurance version, I think previously, I think one of the meetings, Ramon Gisada asked for that, if I'm not mistaken, right, Ramon requested, it should be in the minutes. And I think Sarah as well mentioned, mentioned as well. So that's what, that I, that I included.
Yeah.
I submitted an application to some insurance company and I, I don't remember. I think Andrea, she's still working for us, she submitted an application, but I don't know what candidate.
Yeah, but I can follow up. The bottom line is, is for, for us to.
To have a complete package for whoever the candidate, whoever the person.
Correct. Yeah, and, and it's pretty clear and it's pretty standard. We are responsible, at least the board and, and also staff is responsible for their decisions. Uh, collectively, you would receive representation. Anything beyond that, if, if there's an investment fraud or anything else, then we're screwed. In other words, then we have to look for our own attorney. But anything, right? That's basically what is it that, as a board collectively, we make a decision. If you make a decision, um, and.
You get outside of that, that's on you.
That's on you, right?
Yep.
Don't put your money, don't put the fingers in the cookie jar.
There's a pool at all times. All right. Then we had attorney Corrigan's contract, number seven.
Yep.
Yeah, I, uh, Octavian, I informed the board that I really don't have a proposed contract and I'm content serving the board under my current, the current terms, which is basically at will. The only thing is that we, as we discussed, is setting like a flat rate going forward just so we don't have to continue to deal with the value of ours. But I think you and I can, can work on that.
Right. Is the board in agreement? Okay, good. I think so, good.
Then we had the Boys and Girls Club partnership.
Yes, the, the, the item of, have you, that, that wasn't discussed, right?
No.
Okay. The Boys and Girls Club partnership is that the, we do have an intern and it was a decision that I decided to have the intern because it is no financial implication for the LRA. Usually during summer, we, it's customary for students to participate during, in a summer job program. The Boys and Girls Club requested that we, that we have a student. They would take care financially of the, the participant.
And that's.
Right. They will pay for it. Yes.
So have we been assigned anyone?
Yeah, there's a person that is, that, that is, his name is Johan Cuevas.
Okay.
And he comes every day, I mean, at least, I believe it's twenty hours.
Okay.
Working with you? Working with you?
Yeah, working with. Why so good? At least it's two weeks. Uh, he, he wears a tie and a long sleeve shirt. He doesn't wear a suit yet, so.
He's working on, he's learning.
He's learning, yeah. Learning the basics. All right.
Next, we had the Fund Development Consulting Position.
I don't think we need a vote on that, like, it's just information. Do we? I'm asking.
What is that? What is that?
That's number nine.
Number ten, number two.
Number ten? No, number nine.
Number nine was the.
Boys and Girls, yes, but I, do we need a vote on that? No?
Accepting, uh, the services of an intern?
Yeah, I don't think so.
I think that's within your discretion, right?
Okay, good. At least you adopted the bylaw, so that's what it says anyway.
Yeah.
Right?
Saying, we could entertain a scholarship for our interns at the end of summer.
Awesome. That could be discussed at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. No, I do, I.
Okay, I need to know of that. Eric Walker, you make note of that. We wanted to discuss this.
Any students that are used to.
And this will look great, look great on his resume. He's an old man and, you know, it's like.
Well, especially the Boys and Girls Club have financial movements. We should, we should at least.
I agree.
If this is doing, especially if this.
My associate told me you guys had voted the board bylaws.
Oh, oh, that was a, that was a mistake.
We didn't do it.
Need a, a motion to approve the amended bylaws?
Yes.
Did you look through?
I, I had already looked through them.
Right.
So I was just, at, at this point.
Yeah, no, I don't have.
We, I will entertain a, a motion to accept the amended bylaws. We have one.
Second amendment.
Well, I'm not making it. We, we have the motion made and seconded, roll call.
Anna Medina. Pedro Dejada.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye. The bylaw amendments are accepted. Now can we go into the number ten? The Fund Development Consultant Joint Funding Position for LRA and the City of Lawrence?
Yeah, LRA and the City of Lawrence, correct. So, Mr. Chairman and board members, the, um, we, the city, we've been working, let's say, Andrea was working together with Eliales Reyes.
Okay.
Eliales Reyes took a leave of absence for, for health reasons. And so now both the city as well as the LRA, we don't have a person. But my recommendation to you is, um, the city recently went through a RFP process to select a, a consultant to, uh, to manage the grants as well as project manager. Uh, or to manage the projects, the several, you know, all the, the grants that comes into the city. And Lily was also doing that for us. So what we would like to do is to have that same consultant to work with us. There's an agreement between the city and, and the, uh, and the LRA or a verbal agreement, I think you said, a document in which twenty-five percent of the, the, of the, the work that is, that has to do with this, the LRA is provided by the, by staff. Or they can help us out, right?
I don't remember doing any sort of document for that.
Or there was an email that you sent. Oh, no, it was the, the, I requested the then HR Director Scott, uh, Fisher Back.
Okay.
And he provided, and he, he sent an email to the city attorney as well as the man.
So is this person already working on things on our behalf or?
Not yet. But, I mean, James Karris submits a few, a couple of grants for us through the one-stop shop, a one-stop program, I think, to grant to give, uh, the house in. James, you there?
I am, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, just confirm, and I know it, but you, you have provided and written a couple of grants for the LRA, correct?
Yes, primarily the community one-stop. We, and also submitted requests to, through the congressional delegation as well last year.
So the, let's say if there's a grant that comes up that, that maybe instead of having, uh, well, James cooperates with us and works on the grants, but he also is going to be responsible, as he, I guess he mentioned that to you, to work on the major amendment and I think he's gonna be.
In the next urban redevelopment plan.
In the urban redevelopment plan. So if, if needed, then what I would like to request is to have that consultant, since the city already went through the RFP process, to have them, uh, also help us, uh, to complete any grants that we need. So we don't have to hire a new person for now until probably next year.
So what do we need to do to, to take advantage of that resource?
I think we can, um, write an agreement, I don't know.
Is that person already selected?
Yes, the company has been selected. Yes, it's Golden Threat Agency.
So we basically be using the funds that we previously had allocated for Andrea to.
To pay for some of the expenses.
How, how much would it be out of the LRA's, LRA's share to pay?
That it depends on the projects that, that we're working on. But I do think that we do have, um, a couple of, uh, projects that we are going to submit to the state. They're partially done, but it needs to be completed.
So this person's gonna have a contract with the city?
Exactly.
Not an employee?
Not an employee.
They've been a contractor, okay.
But we have shared the expenses.
Okay.
For, for our projects.
Well, our projects.
I'll entertain a motion to take advantage of this resource. Unless you guys have some questions about this.
Well, it's, it's already a city hire.
Depending on the projects, yes, that it's gonna be submitted. I can provide you with a copy of the contract that was just signed. I think it was signed yesterday or it needs to be signed by the man. That's why I didn't make it available, but, you know, the contract is there.
Right. Okay, I mean, it's, it's gonna be on a fluctuating scale on a project-by-project basis. Anyway, but this is someone who's already gone through the process of the RFP with the city. So, you know, similarly to like when we used the videographer, whoever else was or photographers that already have a contract with the city.
Right.
So we don't have to go through.
The marketing company, correct? As an example. And in this case, you know, we don't want to duplicate the work. So that's why we want to split the expenses. Because any infrastructure upgrade is gonna benefit the, the developers that have, the A developers that, that have been selected by the redevelopment authority.
All right, board, can we get a motion to take advantage of the consultant that has already been going through the RFPs with the city? We have a second?
One second.
Roll call.
Anna Medina. Pedro Dejada. Eric Walker.
Yes, we have accepted that. We have number eleven, redevelopment opportunities seeking board authorization to refer properties to developers and to negotiate a broker or enter into development agreement. You wanna speak to this?
Yeah, that's what's, uh, different properties.
So I think this is, uh, is this the one we were talking about the other day?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically the, the LRA owns fifteen properties around the city. Mostly unbuildable parcels of land. Wetlands is one site out behind the Hafners' corporate headquarters on International Way.
Were we approached by the bonehouse about that?
Yeah, we did, we did. So basically, uh, Octavian was asking, uh, what, what would be entailed and try to, uh, sell some of the property just to try to get some revenue in for the LRA and, uh, so we, we looked at the list, Octavian ran some numbers. I can't remember what you came up with for assessed value, but, I mean, I think, uh, anything over thirty-five grand would have to be by an RFP. So we could, we could move forward with RFPs on those, uh, sites. with RFPs on those uh sites, I mean, I, I think most of them probably, again, not buildable lots, but but might be something of value to a butters. Um as additional parking or, or whatever the case may be, um so if this is just basically be getting the board's uh authorization to move forward, doing some due diligence and research and coming back with a report on what we have and what the process might be of trying to sell.
What we have and if there were anyone who approached us on stuff, and this was pre-pandemic, some of this, some of these, some of these uh approachments, some of these folks that approached us before.
Does that include that property in question at, at the Dunkin' Donuts that I know has been?
It includes all the properties. It includes all the part, but they're.
Like our whole catalog?
To my count, there are forty-eight properties. Uh they may, I mean, um what do you call it, parcels, lots?
Parcels.
A very lot, does that include the uh the uh, the patio?
The patio at Attica, it includes the hydro unit as well.
Okay.
They don't own the building, so. I guess it would depend on what the LRA is gonna ask for or uh set as a minimum. That, I don't, that.
We have been very nice to them.
Yeah.
Very nice to them.
But the thing is, we're keeping, we're having, let's forget about the one at Attica, but, right, but the, I would, I would like to hear it.
So thirty, you said thirty properties, you said forty-eight?
I thought it was maybe around fifteen, but I, I couldn't wrong, I sent Octavian the list.
Yes.
Before we go, we move forward, I, I think that if we get a list, you know.
I mean, even, we're not authorizing this, we, we're, we're exploring our options on it.
Yeah.
But we need to be informed.
So can we, can we get a motion to explore options on our catalog of properties?
Yeah, what, what we're asking, what I'm asking here is to proceed with the initial stages, not to sell, but start looking at the different property, because it, it consists of two parts, one are the thirty or forty-eight, whatever we have, whatever we own. Uh I don't know if we're upkeeping these properties.
Right.
I mean, that could be also, we're talking about redevelopment, but we have an obligation to maintain and.
The stuff that's actually on our document, yeah, okay. Can we, can we get a motion to that effect?
No, that, that's one.
Nope. I'm rushing.
The second, the second, if there's any question, I don't know, through you chair, any question, uh any other question regarding that?
Well, I was just gonna say the only other, uh we mentioned, we were to assess that uh these kind of properties.
Correct, we have looked into it, there's a gentleman that did a uh Gregory story that um I think the Department of, who asked for it. Someone, was it you? And he gives us, he gave us a proposal to, to do the.
Well, he, he appraised all of the uh, the sites that went into the RFP.
The RFP, some, you know, I, I think we should, we should uh go out and, and do another, see if we can find another.
How long ago did he do that? The appraisal?
Year ago? Yeah, a year ago, over a year.
So the values are different now?
He appraised all the, the eight sites that went, the eight sites for redevelopment. But not these uh, these sites.
Yeah, no, these, these sites, I, I can, I'll send the, the board the list, um along with the uh the MIMAP excerpt, you can clearly see where it's located, and then also the assessor's card. Current assessor's card, to get a sense of the uh uh values, and then um the board, I guess, can prioritize what to sell, how to sell it. Hopefully, I, I only ask because of consideration that.
I mean, there hasn't been a decision on that, so that's part of the property, I think we should, we should uh look at the I don't know, we can discuss that.
Yeah, that's one that's, I, we never did get a definitive uh determination on that, the Dunkin' Donuts was supposed to reach out to the neighbors and try to come up with a solution to make everybody happy there. What's up with the neighbors that seem to be more concerned about its upkeep than, than, but, I mean, I, again, I'm not.
In that case, Brian, I think we, we owe it to the community. Uh we cannot have uh one, one, the owners of uh Dunkin' Donuts um hold this, this East Ben possibly. It's ridiculous, we've been, I mean, we discussed that this year, we discussed it last year.
Yeah.
Um I think you provided some uh we said that, that they needed to go before the uh, the zoning board, zoning board.
Yep.
But I don't remember the decision.
Now, they went before, they applied to the zoning board, and then uh they stopped. I mean, they applied, but.
Yeah, I don't think they didn't follow up.
You can't, you can't submit an application to the zoning board without the owner's signature.
Okay, I think it was the nine.
They tried to slide, they tried to slide in McCarthy flagged it. Uh it was uh taken off the agenda, I don't know where they stand with that, if you remember, I think Dan McCarthy was here a few months ago, Frank was here talking about the Amesbury Street um redevelopment project that might impact the site, so I mean, everything seems to be up in air, up in the air on whether Dunkin' Donuts is, is gonna be able to do that drive-through at all, so I think we just gotta let things play, play themselves out and then um see what they wanna do, I mean, I did get a letter from a downtown Boston law firm, basically, you know, saying, hey, we're, if you don't sell this to us, we're gonna take some legal action, so. So be it.
So be it.
But judge says we gotta sell it, we sell it.
That's what I do, that's what you said in the table.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I, I would say that, that the Chestnut Street alleyway should be uh treated separately. All these other properties uh gotta be looked at and is anything that can be done uh to make some money uh for the LRA, you guys won't do it. Not doing us any good.
Can I, can I get a motion authorizing Octavian to assess the things that the LRA actually owns? In total, and possible usage and possible value.
I'll bring it back to the board.
Can I, can I get that motion?
Yes.
And can I get a second on that motion? Roll call.
Anna Medina.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, part B of this request is also the uh, do we there are a series of properties in the city, uh which I discussed with, with Attorney Coria. Then there's one in the downtown area, there's one that I had um on West Street. Uh the, I don't know if Dan Holleran is, is on.
He hasn't been.
He's not, okay, it's just James, that we um, I think Cisu uh the property on West Street, um they came to us and they met with Brian and I uh to talk about possible, you know, what could they do with the property, they have another property on April Street. Um there's also a meeting scheduled Tuesday, is it Tuesday the seven or the eight? The eighth, that I have with Berkeley, uh the Berkeley Home Care. Retirement, retirement home, uh because they also approached, remember they're a nonprofit organization. They wanted to know, number one, if, if the city is interested or the LRA um which other property we have um that we're looking at, so there's, those are the two. Uh the one on April Street, the, the, the three properties that are are owned by Cisu, the Berkeley Retirement Home.
Property adjacent to the um, St. Anthony's and the property adjacent to the Senior Center. That one we're talking about, or the city-owned?
No, there are, there are four or five projects, and I think six, there's one also close to the Hennessy School. This property, we, uh since they approached us, we would like to sit down with them and discuss what are uh viable options, if the LRA can entertain and one way or the other, own part of a syndication. Um see how we can work with these, with, with, with the property owners for them to sell this, so there's two nonprofits.
These are properties that they own or properties that we?
They own, they own, yes, the home, the, the Berkeley Retirement Home. Uh there's certain clause within bylaws that if you, how you need to dispose of the property. Uh we don't know exactly what the details are, that's the reason why I do, they invited us to the meeting on eight.
So there's nothing, there, there's nothing viable in there now, or is it?
No, it's just to listen, but I want your, your uh, your, your direction or your approval for me to go to these, uh to these meetings and discuss. Just listen.
I will entertain that motion.
No, he's not gonna buy, if there is a possibility for us to negotiate something, um we'll bring it back to you and have that discussion. Right, but we need to start, I mean, if we are invited to, to sit at a date, the table and negotiate any, any possible deals, I want your authorization.
Can we get a motion authorizing Octavian?
You hear the one hundred percent.
Is that your motion?
No, Anna asked me a question if I heard what Octavian was saying, and I said I, I was, I was just making notes, because I, I'd like to make sure that I.
For your motion?
No, for any future.
Can I get that motion authorizing Octavian with the help of Brian to listen to the proposals uh for these owners? Okay, can I get a second on that? Roll call.
Anna Medina. Eric Walker.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. I will motion, I will entertain a motion to close this meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anna. Pedro.
Yes.
Aye, thank you. Yes, we have.